We'll go ahead and get started. If President Fairman comes along, I'll take over the meeting. Roll call, please.
Dr. Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Moehutun.
Here.
President James Fairman.
What was it? What voice was that that did the roll call? Was that a new voice?
The new hire.
Welcome back.
That's 227.
227?
Everybody switched back over.
All right. It looks like we'll defer the code officer enforcement report unless staff is willing to do it.
Mr. Vice President, just before we continue on public comments, we received written public comments from Mr. Mosher.
Oh, yeah.
And they are before you for your review.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we'll move on to item number two, the January 2020 organics tonnage report. Navilia.
Just the monthly organics tonnage report. This is for the month of January. We still do not have the month of February. The agenda was posted on the 4th, so every, a few months out of the year, the agenda posting date for the meeting comes a little too soon and CRNR is unable to get their reports to us on time.
Yeah, let's move on then.
I have a question for staff, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, one question, please.
Just one? The Christmas tree recycling without show up in February's report?
Correct. It will be at the April meeting.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Vice President, for now.
Well, you've got your one question. All right, the waste diversion report, Navilia.
And this is just the monthly update for the Board of Directors on our tonnage collection and recycling.
Is this a January report? It says it's a six-month average?
Correct. This is up until January. Again, we did not get the February reports on time.
So, did you report on the January numbers, or?
No. At last month's meeting, we did not receive the January reports on time, so we are a month behind.
My question is, is the diversion going to go down with the new regulations?
It has not so far for the month of January. So, I do have a meeting with CRNR to have an update on what they're doing with the green waste. I will report back to the Board of Directors after that meeting.
Okay. So, that'll be at the next study session or at the next board meeting?
Correct.
Which?
Next study session in April.
Okay.
On the solid waste, we have a new representative, correct?
Not yet.
Okay.
So, we are still working with one of the supervisors. Her name is Kristi. We do not have any sustainability coordinator at the moment.
The big thing that we had talked about was the prior young man was going to do a walking study, for lack of a better term. So, all of that is on hold, obviously, and well, once we get a person, we'll revisit that process.
Correct. And after a little more outreach is done than CRNR, in our last meeting with Dean, he did mention he would like to hold off on that portion of the contract until a little more outreach and then we can measure the results.
Is that part of the contract, though?
Yes.
Walking study?
The cart-to-cart outreach.
What are we calling it?
Cart-to-car outreach.
Oh, okay.
Cart-to-cart.
Navilia, we hired Tri-Pepe to do solid waste communications outreach, and CRNR gave $19,000 towards that study. And that's not in lieu of the cart-to-cart stuff.
Correct. It's not.
Okay. Oh, and the solid waste add-on committee, are we near ready to schedule another meeting?
I would not know. That would be more of a Scott question. I don't know if he was waiting for...
Who's in charge?
Diana is this week. On her calendar.
When will Scott be back?
On Tuesday.
On tomorrow?
Next week, Tuesday.
Well, then, can we make a decision in lieu of Scott being here? I mean, we still have, I think we still have questions. Solid waste add-on committee was developed to answer CRNR's or the citizens' concern with CRNR's missed pickups and I think other questions.
Yeah, we should at least look at some dates and have Scott aware of those dates that we're looking at. The missed pickup thing, my neighborhood got hit really hard this week, according to Nextdoor, is that what it's called?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there were a lot of comments on Nextdoor last, or this week, excuse me, last week, our pickup day is Thursday, so being the dutiful director that I am, I always put comments on Nextdoor about calling, making sure people called or reported. I hope that's okay. I mean, somebody needs to know, so.
It's okay. I will look at some dates for the end of March, early April, and I will send the 12 ad hoc members for, to see if we can get it.
Do you think we need to meet in? Is that quick enough?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Consideration of approving special holiday pay the day before Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Diana Wojcicki will provide the report.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President and Board. Historically, customer activity at district offices during the day before Thanksgiving and then on December 24th has been slow. In previous years, the Board has authorized a revision to the normal operating hours for both of those days. Since 2010, district offices have closed at 12 o'clock noon on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving and on December 24th, allowing staff adequate time to travel to their destination for the holiday season. At the regular board meeting on November 21st, 2019, the Board suggested to staff that instead of coming back each year to request early closure for those days, that we consider approval to revise those normal operating hours. At the same meeting, the Board requested that the staff determine how much activity occurs at the office on those days and then report back. So, staff, as requested, did record that activity and found that on the day before Thanksgiving, November 27th, that there were not any permits issued and there were only two members of the public who visited district offices on those, on that day. One of those was previously scheduled and expected. So, on that, also, the phones were unusually light. There were only two telephone calls throughout that morning. And then on December 24th, the day before Christmas, there were two phone calls, there were no permits issued, and no members of the public visited district offices. During that hours of office closure, staff has the option, they can stay and work the full day, or they can voluntarily use their accrued leave time, vacation, floating holiday, comp time, executive leave. Staff is recommending that the day before Thanksgiving and the day before Christmas, December 24th, be called special holidays, where employees will be paid their normally scheduled work hours as holiday hours on those two days. Staff believes that adding special holidays as part of the district's benefits package can both entice job candidates as we're recruiting and also to help retain employees by giving them additional flexibility while also, at the same time, contributing to a healthy work-life balance and higher employee satisfaction. At this time, district employees have 10 paid holidays, as you know, and then two floating holidays. And the floating holidays can be used at any time during the year, but the purpose of those floating holidays is to allow personal days that employees can use at any time during the year over and above their accrued vacation, sick, or other paid leave time. Floating holidays allow employees to take paid time off when their religious or traditional practices don't match the federal holiday schedules such as Hanukkah, Passover, Good Friday, Lunar New Year, or for any other reason without employees having to use their vacation time. Floating holidays also come in handy for unexpected events or emergencies, we found out if paid time off has been exhausted. So, the benefit of having the floating holidays is that staff has the discretion on how and when to use their leave. If the Board were to require staff to use their floating holidays for the day before Thanksgiving and December 24th, it would be considered a reduced benefit. As far as other local agencies, Orange County Sanitation District offers paid time off the day before Christmas. Mesa Water District has special holiday pay the day before Christmas and the day before New Year's Day. The City of Costa Mesa closes for two weeks during Christmas and New Year's Day holidays, but only Christmas and New Year's days are considered paid holidays. The staff report states it's unclear if the city's personnel rules and regulations take the time off as unpaid, but I did recently found out, Vice President Uten let me know that he spoke to somebody there and it is unpaid time, or they can use their accrued leave. Midway City Sanitary District offers employees the option of selecting any date as a paid holiday for celebrating their particular tradition, hero, or celebration. After a full year of service, Midway City employees are also granted two additional days off, one for their birthday and the other at a time designated by the employee. Current district procedures for all holidays and revisions to regular operating hours include notifying the public. We do it by posting the information on our website, social media, signs on the front door and through gov outreach. So, staff is recommending that the Board of Directors direct staff to bring this item back to the March 23rd, 2020, regular Board of Directors meeting to consider approving special holiday pay the day before Thanksgiving and Christmas. The estimated salary cost for district employees per day is approximately $7,500. That's the employee hourly rate per day for all current positions.
Yeah, the door has to be...
You have to have one door open for a public meeting, but thank you.
Tell those people out there to be quiet.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Well, I was the one that brought this up for study to find out what other districts are doing.
Yeah.
So, this enlightens me a lot, and it's going to come back for a decision at the Board.
If the Board would like to direct staff?
I could go either way, but this is a decision of the Board.
Yeah, can you clarify? You said something about Midway City gives their employees discretion, say, given them, we used to call it personal time when I worked in a corporate setting, and you had up to, I don't remember how many days where you could take half-day increments and up to full days. Is that what they do? They just say, rather than call it a special holiday, you pick the days you want off?
Well, they do. So, they offer employees the option of selecting any date as a paid holiday for celebrating their particular tradition, hero, or celebration. So, such as we have floating holidays, then that's what they do.
Do they, how many of those days do they get?
I think they get that day, and then after a full year of employment, they also get two additional days off, one is their birthday and another time they designate.
Oh, okay. Okay.
As you know, current CMSD employees don't get their birthday off.
Well, a lot of women don't celebrate birthdays.
Careful.
No, we just reverse it. We go the other way.
No.
So, the Board is historically given half a day each of those days in addition to the holidays and whatnot?
So, we close at noon, and then if employees want to take from noon until closing off, they have to use their accrued leave. It's not, they're not paid for that.
Does everybody do that currently?
Some do. Some do, but some prefer to work because they don't want to use their leave time.
Any other?
I know typically, in my, the whole, I'm not advocating we give you the whole week of Thanksgiving off, but that whole week tends to be a really slow week, period. And the day before Christmas, you said, who was it that gave Christmas Eve and Christmas, New Year's Eve, full day off?
City of Costa Mesa, they, Christmas, only Christmas and New Year's Day are considered paid holidays, and then they have the whole, employees can take the two weeks off.
Do they not get paid during that two weeks?
I think it's an, I think that they have to use their leave time.
Optional?
It's not clear in their personnel rules, but I know Vice President Uten has...
I talked to Human Resources there this morning, and they give the day before Christmas and New Year's off. The offices are just closed, and it's discretionary whether staff take time off.
Oh, so they could use their vacation?
They can use it, yes.
But they're not allowed to come to work, are they?
No, they...
Still can't come to work?
They're required to come to work.
But the offices are closed.
The offices are closed as far as business, but the personnel have to show up unless they choose to take their vacations or whatnot.
So, they call it optional?
It is optional whether the employees take additional time off.
We should just consider what we would like to do, I think, because everybody's a little different. So, we should think about it before the board meeting and how we want to go.
I'm sorry. So, Orange County Sanitation District offers the day before Christmas off as a paid holiday, and Mesa Water has special holiday pay the day before Christmas and the day before New Year's.
Okay, that's, it was Mesa Water.
Yeah.
Okay.
They don't refer to Thanksgiving at all.
So, what are the wishes of the Board?
Well, I don't think we can vote on it today. We have to wait till the Board.
No, but we can recommend today, and then they'd go on the agenda for next public agenda.
Yeah, then let's put it on the agenda for the board meeting and make a decision.
Actually, when I worked at Orange County San District, that was, that's a new holiday for the staff, or new time off with pay.
What date is that, Bob?
Anytime before a holiday. Now, they oftentimes would let people go home at noon, but everybody showed up that didn't want to take a day off. So, I think, you know, I think agencies are moving towards giving staff more benefits, at least as far as Orange County San District.
Eve is the 31st.
Usually.
It is. Here. I'm kind of...
Drink some more coffee.
Well, then, we'll put it on the agenda for the next board meeting and vote on it. Any other comments or questions?
No, I had trouble, I don't have any trouble to recommend it now, but I'll do what you want.
Okay. You can't vote on it now, anyway.
No, not voting, but it's recommending.
Sold.
Rather than...
Okay, well, then, if there's no other questions, let's move along.
Okay.
Item five, master plan, update status.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike Benesh, district engineer, will provide the report. Oh, yes, and we'll provide the report. Sorry.
Is this okay? Okay. I'm sorry, doing this presentation under such circumstances, I would rather not do that, but life goes on. And last time I did presentation, we were at same round table, so now, but good to see everyone in cheerful mood, consider the weather. So, today, we'd like to present status on the master plan. We're at the point finalizing and putting the pieces together. There's quite few people who are part of the, of this master plan. Last time, the master plan was updated in 2005, and last time, it was planning effort to provide comprehensive master plan for the district. So, this master plan is a next step forward. Now, we have EC, part of the team, which provides JAS system, which allowed us to do more precise evaluation of the system. Well, you know, everybody, where I don't have to, you know, that our boundaries consist of City of Costa Mesa, part of City of Newport Beach, and part of unincorporated territory. District served population, last figures we have probably for City of Costa Mesa, it's 116,000. Probably, we're going to update that number before we release final report. It's about 4,700 residents in City of Newport Beach in unincorporated territory, the district Since 1983, that's when we did major update of the sewer plan and consider our Bible. You know, there's a lot of changes in the zone use and in the city. City adopted in 1990, adopted general plan, and that was changed, and now we have new changes which I'm going to address later. So, with extended team, now we have EC develop the JAS system, which was encompass our sewer atlases, computerized maintenance management system, and last, they assist us provide hydraulic modeling based on JAS system. Excuse me. Previous master plan studies, the hydraulic modeling was based, one big change, everything was done manually. We estimated the land use, we estimated area manually. At that time, we didn't have all accessory parcel numbers, we didn't have exact square footage. Now, we have exact square footage of each parcel. Previously, in our master plan, we include, all areas include everything up to the center line of the street. Well, obviously, you know, we're not servicing streets, so now we can estimate only the acreage of actual parcels. That's what EC assists us to evaluate. That was a big change. So, EC obtained last year, it was somewhere at beginning of last year, obtained land use from City of Newport Beach and City of Costa Mesa, and based on parameters, we provide them for coefficient we use, which shown in this, I need to learn to use this. Yeah, here's coefficient. They assemble and calibrated the hydraulic modeling. The flow coefficients they used was developed, as I mentioned, way back in 1983, which is shown in this table, and which kind consistent with coefficient used by the county sanitation district and county of LA, city of LA. And it's important because later on, it would be apparent, you know, how important that So, based on all those criteria, it was determined which segments of our system are under capacity and may require the improvements, future improvements. Here's a map of all our lines with pump station in yellow. And here is district area divided in different service area, which ultimately flow to some particular nod where it would be critical to evaluate the flow. The service area, this is one of the sample of the sub areas near Mendoza Pump Station. So, different use residential, broken down in low, low-density residential, high, medium-density, high-density, commercial, it's all shown in different colors. So, going back, here's a breakdown in the sub areas. Here's a table from 1983, which shows which lines were under capacity. And the last column shows those areas. And basically, those areas were on the west side around the pump station. We knew that for a long time, and that's why, for a long time, we planned and we're hoping that County Sanitation District would divert and build the line across the channel, which would allow us to abandon all the pump station on the west side. Apparently, it didn't go through, so now we have to go back, all the way back to 1983, where we knew that which line were under capacity, evaluate that again, particularly line on Wilson and all lines which handling pump station pumping into the easterly from the west side and then eventually to the... pump station pumping into the easterly from the west side, and then eventually to the county lines. So the standard we use for a design to carry peak flow, typically, it's for half full lines have to flow half full, for lines less than, up to 18 inch in diameter. Everything higher from 21 inch, next is 21 inch and higher, shouldn't flow more than 75 percent. So that kind of allowed us to maintain and have a control of our system, and that's kind of aligned with standards, industry standards. So based on hydraulic modeling, we determined that there's 35 lines above 50 percent capacity. There were two lines above 50 percent but under 75 percent, and there were 11 lines which, segments which were over 75 percent capacity. So here, here is small, you know, if we have, here's a list of our lines, which, well, let's go back, for some reason, it's probably hard to see. I am colorblind myself, but it's hard, probably those lines are shown in orange and green, I guess. You know, can you see? Is it possible to enlarge it? Maybe next one, let me see if. Well, regardless, so there's, again, so there were 30, 30 lines which were severely impacted over three quarter full. Yeah, orange section is right here, there is half full, and red is from the three quarter full. So what we did, so this is just hydraulic modeling, that's just based on coefficient we use. It's used by industry, we use for many years, but we have, you know, to be consistent and use those coefficient. So to verify that, we ask our crew just to do the flow check, just opening manhole and deep manhole and see the water level in those critical manholes. And it was determined based on that, that six line out of that 13 are still critically impacted, still require the further evaluation. So we hire the company which does floor monitoring, US3. They evaluated segments, and based on that, they found only one above 70 percent flowing So, and that's line on Wilson, I think that's Wilson and all the way at Harbor, Fairview, maybe Harbor, I need to check, it's shown on the map. So maybe it's a good point to bring it right here. So our idea was, okay, we need, this line is over 70 percent capacity, probably we need to upgrade that line now and monitor rest of the lines. But everything changed right now, apparently, city adopted new ordinance at the beginning of the year, based on new state law to allow additional units, new ADU on a single family, on a low-density residential to build additional units. Apparently, we just learned city of Newport Beach adopt same ordinance, city of Newport Beach gonna do 48, over 4,800 homes. I don't know how many homes would affect the within our district. So, so basically, now we need to reevaluate and to see how is that, so probably everybody not gonna jump and start, all developers try to jump and add those additional units. On top of that, part of that ordinance, city of Costa Mesa pass, they allowed increase of density for commercial by 25 percent. So now we have to go back drafting board and ask, back to our computers and ask EC to reevaluate the hydraulic modeling and see which line would be impacted more than what it was previously evaluated, and probably repeat the steps again, send a crew, evaluate those additional lines, and maybe do additional floor monitoring. The increase in density on, from low to medium density, so probably we would hear, we consider that would be considered, all those low-density residential, we have to consider them for our purposes as medium-density residential, and use those criteria to reevaluate and then follow up with floor monitoring. So that's, that's the direction we are, we are planning to take, so that's. Next item, we were, when Rob was directing the study, Rob Hammers, the pump station were not in, capacity of pump station were not in, in the scope of the master plan, we would like to add that Rob was thinking that, you know, everybody familiar, and pump station enforcement is a critical issue, and it was constantly in a, in our view, so we constantly will looking at that, but for, I think we still like to, to add that in the master planning can evaluate the, the capacity, to see if, from capacity point of view, if we have to take any immediate steps or consider some steps for pump station, up, upsizing pump, we need to see how that gonna affect from capacity point of view, not from what was planning previously, just from maintenance point of view. So next item, we, in our, I apologize, not using the point, so this is list of the impacted segments, over 50 percent, over 75 percent. Here's samples of that Wilson line, which is over capacity, that Wilson and Fairview. And next item of the master plan was evaluating the calcium buildup in the sewer system. Should I keep going, or should we take a break if any question on the last portion?
I have some questions, if we, it's up to you two.
Why don't we wait until the end and we can just.
Just to go through whole thing and then, okay. So next one is a calcium and buildup in the sewer main. Well, as we know, the calcium buildup is one of the causes that from groundwater infiltrating into the pipes or the joint laterals or manholes. Groundwater usually is high in total dissolved solids and calcium. The, that infiltrated groundwater evaporates into the interior of the pipes and react with sewer gases to form that calcium carbonate scale, and usually, it's usually on non-wetted portion of the pipe. This is one of the pictures taken all the way back in 2006. So it's probably much worse by now. The televising of the sewer line allowed us to determine which lines consist of the calcium buildup. And the thickness of that calcium, it varies from area to area, and it's somewhere from quarter inch to, in some instances, it could be, you know, the whole non-wetted portion of the pipe could be covered by calcium. Here's a map from the county, which, general map shows the groundwater level. And as you can see, on the perimeter of our district, that water level is, groundwater level, just 10 feet, 10 feet high, so, which is, and actually, that's actually consistent, as you can see, the televising of our line, latest televising, determined that, that calcium buildup around that low groundwater, all the way on the perimeter of our district. So one way to deal with that is just to use high-pressure nozzle to remove the calcium. Based on televising, we determined that there were 18 lines consisting of calcium, and here in this table, we show six of them, which are on a perimeter of that low groundwater. Technology improves every year, so we need to put project out to bid, but from latest indication, we have it, it would take somewhere between maybe $5,000, $5,000 to $7,000 to handle each line. So let's say we have 30 lines, so we're talking about 100,000, 150,000, so it's not, so probably we would recommend to handle that kind, as soon as we complete the studies. We can probably recommend to make one project and handle that. The other part of the study includes doctoral iron pipe, DAP. Historically, DAP was material of choice because of the strength, and the problem is air along into DAP allowed that DAP to corrode and on internal surfaces of the pipe. So we evaluate the corrosion in DAP through televising, and it's approximately 3,800 feet of DAP, cast iron and DAP in our system. We identify about 20 segments of fully corroded DAP pipe, and there were 105 segments of partially So we do have project right now, I guess, while we were working on the study, and it's, we knew that's a problem, so we have one project on the board right now, we're working on to, to handle partial, the portion of the DAP, and so probably would take, I guess, few projects, depends on the budget. If we wanna break into few project to handle rest of the DAP segment. The cost we estimate, I think originally, when it was, problem was presented, since last CCTV project, the additional lines, DAP lines were added, I think there's additional two full segments, DAP and few partial problem, DAP with a problem of corrosion. We estimate somewhere between 1.8 and $2 million to handle that problem. So this is kind of rough at this point, based on the latest figures. So again, we need to put project out to bid and see what, what cost we'll get. This is kind of basic overview where we are on the master plan, so we are open to the questions. Mike, anything I forgot to mention?
I think you covered most of it. Any questions from the board? Arlene?
I feel like the weather, wow, I'm not sure about this report. You said, okay, I have several. You said that the flows is determined by the district by what the city service does. And, you know, I was wondering, do you have a plan that you say a certain, so many years or months or whatever, that you actually get with the city to determine what they're saying, like with the new ordinance that is about, or about anything of changes, or if they're. Or if they're subjecting us to a lot of different pipelines being done because of the urgency of development? You know, I thought the whole time, even when I was with the city, that we always had a thing where we got together and talked. But I'm just wondering, from this report, you know, I don't know, when the city had that new ordinance that they adopted, did they come to you and say, or to the sanitary district and say, we're adopting this and how does it fit in with you? Or they just went ahead and did it?
Well, that's our understanding. We obtained all latest land use from the city last year. And there weren't any mentioning. And I think state just bully the law on all cities. And they just passed that ordinance at the beginning of this year. So that's, at least this team, we just learned. I don't think any, anyone approached the district and.
Do we approach them to have a meeting to discuss what we're, you know?
We have not. That would be, I think we need to do some, probably it will take a few weeks. We need to get well-ready requests from EEC to reevaluate the system. So we were thinking when we have some kind of answers, when we go to the city. So we have something in our pocket already, knowing that, that we have quite impact on our system. So we don't want to go empty-handed.
Can I interject something real quick? You know, and Jim, Jim and I go to the OCAG meetings. And the big thing lately has been the regional housing needs assessment.
Yes.
So the city, I don't think the city can come to us yet until that's nailed down. You know, that's part of it, right, Jim?
Yeah.
Until the city gets their RHNA fully established, it's going to be hard for us to determine what flow capacity. The other thing that we're talking about with the ADUs, additional living units, we don't get a choice in that. That's a state mandate. They, if someone wants to build a granny flat in their, in their, they can do it. City can't say no.
City cannot. But I think if we can, we come with saying that, okay, it's going to affect our sewer line. We cannot, I mean, if whole system is going to start flowing above the ground, so maybe they would have some. At least in approval, they don't, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ar.
I'd like to add to what they're saying. Because Mr. Mosier sent us the thing about government code, section 65852, appears to allow cities and counties to prohibit ADUs in certain areas based on adequate sewer service. So I think that we have the ability to meet with the city. When they, when they get a permit to us, we say, no, you can't build it because we have inadequate facilities.
Or, or the contractor can upgrade.
So there's no cost.
It's based on that.
So I think our approach would be to get your information together, meet with the cities, both cities, and say, hey, before you plan anything, we have to see if we have capacity in our lines.
Well, the city, city has to run it by the water district, the sanitary district.
We have to be ready to say, no, you can't do it because we have no capacity.
I think a lot of what Ephraim has shown us are the areas that we know.
But I agree, at least we need to put both cities on notice that we, based on our latest master plan, we have segments under capacity. And we just cannot, so everything has to go through us in the planning stage, not just when they submit the plans for approval and we say, uh-uh, you have to, this line is under capacity, go ahead, build 18-inch line on just small ADU.
What is the process, so what is the process to get a permit? Do they have to present it to us or to, to you?
Well, usually they.
Well, if I can interject, the new ordinance, it's a ministerial permit. They go in there with a set of plans, they get it reviewed, and they come out with a permit. There is no planning review, there is no consulting with us. We just get the plan when they're going out to build.
So there are chances that it might fall through the cracks. The city might start approving the, those project without even going to us. So, yeah, we need to maybe somehow officially.
Could you look up that government code that he presented to us to see if we do have the clout to stop it? It's a.
Yeah, I did look through that. And the city is actually supposed to contact us. And we're supposed to respond, but they haven't done that. Newport Beach is having their hearing tonight. City of Costa Mesa passed it last month, or in December, without any input from us.
They passed their proposal, but they didn't pass.
Costa Mesa passed the order.
Costa Mesa passed their ordinance.
I know, I know. But they still have to come to us for a permit, don't they?
That's correct.
Or sewer permit, yeah.
Yeah, sewer permit.
Yeah, and that's the time when you say, if you have the data that the master plan will provide you, you can say no. And then developer has the choice, or the homeowner has the choice, whether they proceed or not.
I, I don't know, do we have the ability to say no when someone comes in for a sewer permit?
The permit comes to us to decide whether we have the capacity to serve.
Correct, yes.
And that's the time when you say no.
Yeah, probably at the planning stage.
That needs to be checked out. That's historically what's happened.
Right, and I understand that. And there was a planning process. It went through DRC and other things. But now there is no planning involvement in it.
But there's still a permit.
Just automatically they can get a permit.
Yeah, it's like going in for a permit to do a room addition or something.
Well, probably city have limited choices to say no to the state. So they adopted that ordinance, again, with, if it meet all other criteria. And one of the criteria is capacity of the sewer and water line.
Part of what they did is to streamline this so that they don't get the fines from the state. State's saying, you've got to build these units and to prevent the city from getting the fines. I think they've just sort of said, go for it, just get it, they streamlined the whole thing.
No, they still should, we should be able to present our high-capacity lines, say, here's the ones you cannot build in this area because we have.
Well, you know, my, my concern is that we get a hold of this and get a handle on it. Because, you know, it's just going.
We need to meet with the city and determine when we have the option to tell them no or yes. We always tell them, we've almost always had the option to tell them yes. And rarely, but there are developments that we've told them no, developer has to, you know, if they want service, they have to.
Do you want us as engineer handle, or do you think it should be handled on a higher level and?
Oh, this is a, this is a meeting that you, you both need to have with the city.
Staff.
And you need to figure out, Rob used to meet with them regularly.
We'll, we'll take that on.
That needs to be reestablished.
We'll take that on, we'll, we'll handle that immediately.
Okay, I still have a couple more concerns. One is the last part about the liners on the pipes. You know, before, Rob was trying to get the pipes done, cast iron, so many at a time. But then the liners, how wonderful is that when it's three, four so ready?
I think what you're referring to, it was a structural, where we have structural problem with the pipe, where we identify grade five, grade four.
Yes.
And my understanding that, so that's not a part of the master plan, that's kind of regular maintenance. And I think we handle all grade five, and I think we handle most of the grade four.
I would think that's a priority.
Those were the vitrified clay pipe structural evaluation.
That's correct. That was not, okay.
And I think Arlene's question is, how, how are the ductile iron pipe corrosion assessments done so that we don't line a pipe that needs, needs to be replaced because it's so badly corroded?
Like a Band-Aid system.
Yeah, I mean, we've identified the, we've got 5,000 feet of whatever ductile iron pipe and, or some number. And we know that the liners are compromised, and we have a plan to do half of the project now and half later. Has the corrosion assessment been done on those lines to determine that a liner is all that's needed?
It was determined, on the partial segments with corrosion of DAP, probably it would be safe to say that lining would be sufficient. Lining, they're claiming lining provides some structural, additional structural capacity on the pipe. It's a valid question on the full segments, where we have full segment corroded, which we have, what, 20 segments? That's, that's a valid question to see if it would be justifiable to replace the whole pipe, which obviously much more expensive steps than just lining them. The, to answer the question, to evaluate, it's, again, it's very expensive procedure. You have to send a probe. There are some methods to evaluate the thickness of the, of the pipe. Probably that cost, probably between this cost and then determine that lining is sufficient. Probably it would be just, just replace whole, whole pipe with a new pipe, then just to take that step and evaluate. I think that we evaluated in some fourth main, we did that. That was quite expensive and quite effort to evaluate the remaining thickness of the DAP pipe in the fourth main, so.
Okay, so you reline it and then it fails. I mean, you know, is it, is it more costly to evaluate it or to line it and then it fails and then you have to replace it? I mean, that, that should be, be determined in the, in the master plan. You know, the cost of, the cost of determining the amount of corrosion that would allow the pipe to fail, the reason it's there is because of strength generally.
Well, and that's, I guess, would be a part of the, master plan is just planning deficiency. So we know we need to handle those segments. So how are we going to handle this actual project? So once we put a project on the line, that part of the project will obviously determine if it's lining, cleaning and lining makes sense, or maybe we, we should replace. So that's actual, it's not part of the master plan kind of global, it's how we're handling now based on the master plan.
You've got one point, you've got, you've got half the ductile iron segments ready to be relined. How, how did you get to that point? Was there no evaluation done as to corrosion?
You referring to the partial corrosion in DAP?
Yeah, I'm referring to the half the ductile iron pipes. There is a project to reline them.
Currently, we have project on, in the stream. We did, we haven't determined if we have to.
Part of that project will be to determine.
If we have to realign or, or replace it, yeah.
Okay, got it.
You know what I'd like to see in April, for us to have a study session, just on this project with him too. And our manager would be here, we'd be full on with all five of us here and be able to talk about this. Because this is, I appreciate the whole report, but it's, it really needs help. And I think it's up to us too, to guide where we're coming from, to, for them to be able to understand, because we're picking out different parts. But at the same time, there's a lot to this. We need financially to look at, like he said, the budget and how to plan on that and, and what we're doing on different things that are major, that really needs some help right away. So anyway, if you're willing, I think we should.
I totally agree with you. And I think we need to, I was under the impression that this is an ongoing thing and that, and that the, we were more than halfway through it, as I recall. But evidently, that may not be the case. But we need to, we need to formulate a game plan to alleviate this problem.
Well, and that's what master plan is all about. It's just master plan, raising question, basically, what we have to do. And it just, it's wrote forward. How are we going to do it? That's the next step. And we need to take all those items, calcium, DAP, overcapacity, new ordinance by the city. So now we need to, to work item by item resolving that. But that's kind of general overview where, where we are with, with our system.
I think it's critical, we're finally addressing the master plan. In 2006 until now is way, 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 way too long to have waited to do the master plan.
Well, this is a synopsis of our master plan. We will present complete plan for.
But I, I think you've presented enough today that we can come back to this normal study session in April, you know, and, and continue the discussion and find out what progress you've made. I think it's, an ounce of planning is worth a pound of cure. And it's critically important that we finish this master plan and then get on with the projects to figure out the details.
Some kind of priority order to, you know, okay.
Yes.
But it is important, and, you know, this is the first shot that we had at this. So this is an eye-opener.
Wait, and talk to Scott, too. He may have a vision already that he hasn't told us. And then we can go from there for our next step.
Okay, so we, we're good with our direction.
Good report, you know, that gives us some things to think about. I think the critical thing is, you know, meeting with the cities and making sure they know where we're.
Both cities, yeah.
Any other comments or questions on that issue?
Thank you. Thank you for listening and the input, and we'll, we'll take that on.
But this needs to go on the next agenda for the meeting. We want to get this on.
What do we have to put it on the agenda for discussion again? No, for this board meeting in March, just to discuss the, you know, what our game plan is.
I think we should move it to the April study session.
Just to discuss it, not to vote on.
Oh, I get it.
Just to let it, let Scott know that we need to look at this a little bit more thoroughly. Not, not, no, no votes at all, just, we just need to, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you. Okay, let's move along. Oral, oral communications and director comments.
Jim, I, oh, go ahead, bud, go ahead. Bob and I met yesterday with Peter and Roger of our monthly, and one of the things, and maybe this is, I guess, Gene and Lonnie, they recommended that we get a press release out regarding the measures that we're taking for coronavirus. And a lot of the water districts are doing that, putting out things saying, hey, your water's safe, or whatever. I don't know what extra measures we're taking, but I think it would behoove us to get something out saying. something out saying, you know, reminding people to wash their hands from a sanitary perp, all of those things. Peter Whittingham sent me a copy of a press release that went from South Coast Water District that I'll forward to you to look at, but I think we probably need to do that, just to get it out there.
That's good. Yeah, that's good.
I, I agree, yeah. You're going to send that to Nolani?
I'll send it to Nolani and Gina when I get back to the office.
Yeah, that's good. I went to a luncheon yesterday, the mayor had for International Women's Day, and the water district got up and talked on it, you know, and all these different people did, and I sat there thinking, oh, we've never done this. You know, we never have anything to share on what we're going to do about this, so I, I'm right with that.
I think, I think we need to do that.
Put it on Facebook, too. It's going to be people get the newspaper.
That's good.
Well, I have one question. Do you have, do, Michael, do you have any update on the Mendoza pump station flow studies?
No, I don't.
Or do we still, the, the staff or engineering group have any idea whether we still have that flow meter in place?
I'll have to check on it.
I'd like to add that to the, the next study session, an update on that, because we're, by then we'll be nearly done with the rainy season.
Maybe not. Not this week.
Well, but we'll at least get an update that we should, you know, keep it in there, or it is in there, or whatever.
I don't know if Michael knew, did you know that was in there?
To be honest, no. I was not aware of that.
We think it's still in there.
Yeah, we're evaluating where the Mendoza pump station's extra flow is coming from, and we smoked, we smoke tested half of the system, and now we've got a flow meter, or we installed a flow meter in the line from Orange Coast College, or not, no, the fairgrounds.
From the fairgrounds. Okay, to determine infiltration and...
To determine, you know, where the, to try to figure out where the extra flow is coming from.
I'll check on that.
I have one oral communication.
There's that, there's a golf tournament planned for April 14th at Costa Mesa Golf Course for the Aunt Bely family who died in a plane crash with Kobe, and I talked to Scott, I didn't know he was in Cambodia when I called him, but he answered. But he thought we should bring it to consideration at the board meeting because we'd have to get it approved. It's a, it's a $250 cost for us to be a whole sponsor, and we could, if you guys could work the tournament and pass out all our information that we need to give to the public, because it's going to be both golf courses, I believe, be over 300 people there that, mostly from Costa Mesa area. If, I think Phil Marsh is going to present it at the CAC tomorrow, he's got the form. If he doesn't, I have the form at home, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that if you could come up with a game plan for, if we do approve it at the board meeting, it's a minimal cost for us to get out a lot of information.
When is it?
April 14th, that's his number. It's April 14th.
It's our study session.
Yeah, this is going to be, yeah, it's, I mean, it's okay.
That's the one day of the year, I, I have to remember that date. It's one of the two dates I have to remember.
Your wife's birthday?
My anniversary.
But I decided to bring that up to this, the board, it'll, it'll probably come for us for a vote on yes or no, so...
Anybody else have a comment or...
I do. I just wanted to comment that we got our newsletters, you know, I think it's so great. It was so informative, it was so good, everything, even the back with the recycling of the phones, you know, I just, and, and then this, the trash, it just was outstanding, you know, as a person. And I had some neighbors that commented already to me on it, how they felt so informed of what's going on, and I think that's really good, that we're doing something like that. You know, if there's a time, they, they let us know when we have to have an input in this, so we should take advantage of that and tell them.
Is that date of the OCC mulch giveaway in there?
Yes.
That's what I thought. And what's, what's that date again? Is it?
April 14th. Yes.
Okay. And that's still, are we getting the mulch from CRNR?
That is correct. CRNR is providing the mulch and the workers for the compost event. It'll be Saturday, April 25th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00.
Fighting, like we did last time, our staff to work it, too?
We'll have three staff members there directing traffic and assisting.
That was a big event, big event.
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It was combined with...
April 25th, it'll be the compost giveaway at the OCC College on Merrimack and Fairview.
Is that the only event happening that day in terms of, because we had the close also, didn't we? We donated...
Oh, yes, the closed donation's not happening this year, there was not a partner, a...
Mulch? Okay.
There's not a company we can partner with, so it'll just be the compost giveaway.
Good.
Go ahead.
No, I'm done.
I just wanted to remind people that, or us, that we have the leadership conference coming up in San Diego from the 19th to the 22nd, and then OCOG is coming up in March.
Maybe.
This other one was April, I'm sorry, I said that. Then in March is the 20th for the OCOGS, for those of us who are going to it.
Maybe. Well, you never know, and they just canceled Coachella yesterday, but...
Okay.
I, I think we need to keep abreast of all these meetings.
I wonder if they're refunding on some of this, you know, just like the airlines refunds and...
If they postpone it, they, I don't think they'll, the best way is to postpone it, but I...
Yeah, okay, well, okay, well...
Mass hysteria.
Yeah, I'm going to test it.
I have, one more quick thing. Tell David to fix the clock.
Yeah.
Fran, she can reach it.
Hey, Caitlin, can you reach that clock?
Okay, is there anything else to be brought forward? If not, this meeting's adjourned.
See you guys, I got to go.